It's true. Because I had.
Yeah, so then they when they redid it, so now you've yeah, so you're working, so you have all of fifty. She has or she has all of.
Because. A lot of people, but I lost.
But then you came south, okay, so. Down, so you now have. Yeah.
Amy.
Yeah. Yeah.
We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is seven P M. If we can start with a moment of silence, please. If you can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the public of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God.
Just as a reminder, if you have a cell phone on you, please make sure that it's either off or on silent. If you click me, go to your pick role call for us, please.
Councilmember William.
President.
Reed.
President.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler. Davis.
Here.
French.
Here.
And there's Nettie.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So move.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, to start off this evening, we're going to begin with a presentation from our E D C president, Ms. Virgi Arman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for having me tonight and council for asking for a quarterly update, I believe, so. We'll be able to get on a calendar and bring this to you. I think the prior E D C CEO had done a better job of. Doing this on a regular basis, but at least we're get caught up and get on a better track, so. I in I included in the packet tonight, just as an update. A letter that we have written in response to a request for support for. The Greater Grand Rapids Global Center for Battery Innovation and Production. It's for a tech hub grant. That was due or is due on August fifteenth, so we were asked to partner. With the right place out of Grand Rapids, um, and it's a kind of a big triangle. Region here in lower, uh, the lower peninsula that we were asked to consider being a part of rather than. Asking for this big E D A grant, the federal grant on our own, we were asked to be a part of a bigger region, so. Um, Idabird Hill is a person who has come to us from the Detroit area and she's been. Really getting out, meeting a lot of people and asking us to partner, so. She put together a West Michigan African American tech readiness collaborative. And yes, I practiced being able to say that. I didn't get it wrong. Um, and so we were honored to be one of probably forty-five groups that are in that particular collaborative and. We're trying to make sure that, um, everyone, uh, in an equitable fashion benefits from. Being tech ready when the Blue Oval comes, um, so in her region, we have the Blue Oval in the Marshall area, and then there's the Goshen plant north of Grand Rapids, and then. There's another plant on the east side, so that triangle kind of covers all of that area, so. So this letter is an example of how we are getting into those larger collaborators and being able to. Work with, um, bigger pieces of the pie in the state because that's going to help bring. Those dollars to us, so we're trying to make sure we're getting in front of the, in front of those bigger opportunities. Embedded within this document is our Blue Oval readiness seven point plan. So we have workforce development. We know that here in Albion, we have about seven hundred. Either underemployed or unemployed individuals. That are ready to, uh, embark on being tech ready and ready to pick up a new job as these jobs are coming available. Um, they either would be supply chain or retail or all kinds of things that will grow because of the Blue Oval. Um, so we have a grassroots initiative, uh, to interview and discover barriers on a one-on-one basis. Um, like literally trying to find everybody who wishes they could be more employed, shake their hand, find out what is holding them back, so. We want to just really honestly touch everybody and say, how can we help? Um, we know that technical training is critical for these folks and for anyone who's looking to be in some of these new jobs. We're very fortunate to have Innovate Albion as a partner in the STEM engagement as well as Albion College and K C C. Um, the, the community colleges especially are going to play a huge role. When it comes to increased educational opportunities for this workforce development. On the child, the second point is childcare, so we're partnering with Pulse. Uh, to create and establish attainable and relevant childcare centers, uh, here in this, here in the city. Um, some might think that the best thing, for example, would be to have childcare available at the Blue Oval. My thought and what I'm hearing from our folks are, we would rather have the childcare closer to our homes. So we really need to make sure that we're getting childcare here. Rather than maybe near the employment place, so wanting to really make sure that, um, so that for the most flexible opportunity, we have childcare here in the city. For housing, um, we know that we need about fifteen hundred units. Of housing to provide affordable, resilient and meaningful housing. For our current residents, as well as those that we wish to attract as growth for the Ford and those suppliers. Um, we currently have a three-plan approach, three-year plan approach, including repairing and replacing. Lot by lot housing, um, throughout neighborhoods. Supporting home purchasing and ownership and multifamily construction, senior housing construction and market rate development. We're also interested in establishing a shelter and drop-in center facilitating appropriate services to allow families and individuals to experience. Economic freedom in a meaningful way, um, and to, um, specific to their own personal growth plans. We're utilizing many of Mishta's programs and a wide array of developers, housing specialists and service providers in this endeavor. Um, the E D C was recently awarded a half million dollar grant from Mishta to provide housing repairs, and that's through the My Hope program. So if any of you have been working with Tequila Williams, she doesn't actually sit at our office, she sits at. The Alliance, the Healthcare Alliance offices. And uses that space for privacy, so people come in and get help from her there, and they help apply for that help, uh, to get their housing repaired. Um, downtown development is the fourth point. Uh, we work closely with M A D C and specialized developers to revitalize downtown. Uh, anticipated new residents and Albion community, community members can experience diverse and abundant social engagement opportunities. Uh, and in addition to our Superior Street Downtown Corridor, we're expand, we're expanding social. And retain opportunities on our other corridors as you traverse in and out of Albion. Those would be North Eaton Corridor, Austin Avenue Corridor and Michigan Avenue Corridor. Um, in, if you're in the brochure, if you're in the document, there's a link to the Albion. Restaurant brochure, which has been a big hit for, uh, Chamber and for the County, uh, Visitors Bureau, everyone's loving our new. Brochures, you can see all the different places in town to eat. Uh, the fifth, uh, prong of the program is entrepreneurs. Um, so we keep our entrepreneurs close to our heart as we recognize it has been through their efforts in the last many years. And into the future that has and will be the glue that holds our families together. Our families are key to Albion's rich history and future. We have an entrepreneurial support program designed to attract, retain and support our entrepreneurial driven individuals and families. We specifically are focused on eliminating barriers. For the Black Indigenous People of Color population, um, and, uh. And families to experience success as they create generational wealth. By growing their business and serving the Albion community. On this topic, uh, Friday, we were of, uh, made aware that our, another statewide partner of ours. Northern Initiatives had applied for a particular grant for funding for entrepreneurs, it's an incubator grant. And we worked closely with them, wrote a letter of support and were part of their service area. And they did win, they were the only ones in Michigan that won, so. That will mean that we will have assistance with our entrepreneurial pipeline. So that's a, that's a huge win for us, it just came in Friday, so we're really pretty excited. There were, um, forty-five grants awarded nationwide, and that was the only one in Michigan, so. We're really excited, some of you may know Ferris and his group that worked with Entrepreneur Last. He's partnered with that, so we kind of went back and reestablished that relationship. The sixth area is industrial retention and attraction. Uh, we are clearing the way to increase our industrial footprint here in Albion. Maintaining existing and creating new jobs for individuals and families. So that we can once again thrive by activating both our real estate and our people. Um, some of this is big project stuff that we can't talk a lot about right now, and I'm probably people don't like hearing that, but. That's just kind of how these things start, and so we're just praying and keeping our. Fingers crossed and trying to cross all our Ts and dot all our Is and meet all the people necessary to. Be able to put these big projects together. The last bullet point is leadership, so employers in the Albion. Marshall area were recently awarded through an industry-led collaborative. In partnership with Michigan Works and Leo, access to Dale Carnegie Leadership Training. Occurring between now and the end of the calendar year. Over a hundred employees across our region will be afforded the opportunity to experience the Dale Carnegie twelve-week communications. Leadership and Human Relations course. Uh, we're excited to continue this program and, and have future programming through the I S I L C. So that was an, um, an initiative of the E D C, we had. Uh, in the beginning, we had twenty employers that were. Collaborating, and then we ended up with about fifteen, but. Usually those are about three, and they're usually focused on a particular industry, ours was the first. That we are, that we said we wanted this to be a community focus and have as many different people come in so that we can begin. To grow our leadership teams, um. Not necessarily in one industry, but across the whole community, so. Um, the state of Michigan was very excited that we put that together, it was a bit of a lift. And the E D C doesn't really. We don't really garner anything from that, so we can't even say it's our grant because it really belongs to the community, but we're excited that we were able to help, uh, build that piece. There's been a lot of questions about whether we're applying for grants and what, how that's happening, so. In the last ten months, we've applied for twenty-eight grants or partnered on twenty-eight grants. Um, eleven of those have been won either by us or by our partners. Nine have been lost and we still have six pending. Um, we also had reviewed nineteen grants during that same time that we chose. That we chose to not apply for because they didn't fit for us. So I did want to let you know, we're not just applying for everything, but we're trying to be sensitive and. Strategic about what we're applying for. Um, the next twelve months, we have, um, a, we have a bullet point list and a target list of applying for sixty-eight grants. What the staff, so Lindsay Rohr can, in our office, it's. A very quiet down and in hard worker, and she is like the best kept secret grant writer in the world, so, uh, if anybody's watching, you can't have her. Um, she's awesome, and she just, she just puts these things together like, like nobody's business, so. I'm very excited that she is in that down and in position where she is getting those grants done. She's working on three today, she was on vacation last week, she's back today working on three grants. So we're very excited about that, we've had Vikram Strander in as a intern this year, um. He goes back to school at the end of August, so we will miss him, but he's done a ton of research on housing and he's in, working closely on the lot by lot analysis. And he's really, um, been able to really help if anybody wants to stop him. And see the new gigantic new map, he was the person who was able to take the time to put all the dots on the map and it shows. The major owners in the, in the city, so you can kind of get an idea of how our city is built now, so. We have a huge map and it has the four quadrants of. The census tracts and it has the six precincts, and it just has a lot of information zoning and everything all tied in together. So when you're thinking about a grant, if you're looking for one that's in a food scarce area, you can pick that census tract up and you can just stand there and kind of. Negotiate with yourself, where does this grant fit best and how do we partner to get it, so. That, that map has been huge, um, we have an extra one that I can get over to the city, um, I keep forgetting to bring it, it's. At my house because it was in my car and it came out and it never went back in, so, um, but, um, our goal at this point is. Um, to try to continue to serve Albion and we also. Um, as you know, um, we also are the Economic Development Group for Shared and Township. And for Albion Township, so we do attend their meetings and we do take their feedback. And then we have, um, partners in the Calhoun area where we have board positions that we represent Albion on and also at the state level, so. We're trying to do a really good job of partnering, not only at the local level, but at the county level, region. And then state and, um, you know, it's, I believe we have about a year and a half left of. Really getting some of these ARPA dollars because they're all coming to us in all various ways. So as long as we're aware of where the dollars are and then what our projects are and then. Which, which group should be applying, we just keep all kind of shuffling those, um, partnerships together, I think we'll have. A lot of success, I hope that we've been helpful. To the city of Albion and I hope that we've been helpful to the townships around us. And, um, we, we have the seven point plan and we want to be Blue Oval ready. And, um, this is just an extraordinary time to be in this position and I just appreciate, uh, being in it, so. And any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Clay, you first, Councilman French.
Um, so you mentioned, um, the number fifteen hundred units of housing. Do you, we know what the breakdown is relative to new versus, uh, meeting the needs of existing?
So, the way I came up with that number is a little back of the napkin right now, so. You know, two years ago, we needed nine hundred units. And that was pretty well known at that time, there was a housing scam and we had done a march forward, so as of two years ago, nine hundred, maybe even three now. I've been here all along here, so, uh, so maybe nine hundred, we know that. Uh, lower and downtown, say four hundred have come, are coming online, so when they say five hundred. When Blue Oval comes along and we want to double our population, so for now, I threw a thousand. I threw a thousand.
Okay.
And so what we're, what we see is, so for example, I'll give the example, I'm working with some market rate developers. And they are looking at a program similar to the Jackson one hundred program. So they have a plan in Jackson to build a hundred homes, they have a philanthropic donor that gave money, um, toward down payment. They also are using the Mishta Down Payment Program, and the Mishta Down Payment Program. Was recently opened up from a very small amount of usage because it was covered right around the metropolitan areas. They opened it up statewide, so rural, rural cities and areas could also take advantage. I think it's about eighty percent A M I, so let's say you want to buy a new home. And these folks will come in and build it, it's, they, they have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar footprint that they want to build. Um, they need a relatively, um, carefree, uh, lot, so it can't be something we have to tear something down and build on, but we have. The land bank alone has forty of those lots, and then there are other lots, and that's what Vikram is coming up with a lot by lot list. So say you take any one of those and they put that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house there and you can get ten thousand from Mishta. And I recently reached out to the foundation to see if maybe they has some hints on. Who might have a philanthropic, you know, goal here, so there's a set of houses that may not be for everybody, but they'll be for somebody. So that's like one type of housing, then we need to work with multi-unit developers who can take a little bit bigger space. And come up with something that you can keep your density, like. Density, density, density is huge with housing because that's how you really bring the income up and make your realistic product there. We, we can't forget that we still need low-income housing, so we have to be aware of the complexities around developing when you're taking on that high subsidy. But we, we can't just dismiss that out of hand because that, that is a tool for. The people that are already here and even some people we will attract, so. Um, I, it, it seems to me that it's a mix of who is coming and who is here. There is the short term, um, say wildflower. You know, maybe they, maybe a bunch of contractors come in and buy a bunch of houses. You know, fifty houses and they use them for three years and then they recycle those back out to a family. So, um, we're trying to be as innovative and flexible as possible. Because I just don't want to see Albion miss the boat of really creating, um, a housing, you know, paradise, so. That would be ideal.
That's helpful, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mayor, for ten seconds.
Yes. Thank you, Mia. Um, Virgie, you said that, um, you've been here approximately how long?
Ten months now.
So you tell me in ten months. You've applied for at least twenty-eight grants and almost, I would say almost half.
Yeah.
Have got those?
Yes. Um, partnered with others who have, so collaborations.
I mean, I want to tell you, good job. Uh, for one thing, and then the other thing with the housing, um, of being able to help some of our homeowners here. Um, get their homes repaired and fixed up, I really appreciate that because we do get a lot of calls about it. Okay, so I thank you for that, and then another thing, as I see Pastor King here as well. Um, this, the, the thing about childcare is, is, uh, imperative for our community. With all our children going everywhere, fires and all these different. Districts to go to school and the parents have to go here and there and not be even just with the ones that are here. So I, I'm praying and hoping that you are able to be successful in giving us that, that childcare because we really do need it. And I just overall, even what you have brought to the table. Um, I just wish you well, hoping that you can continue to go forward and doing what you need to do. And hoping that your hands don't get tied. Because I think if your hands get tied, we can't move forward, so that's just something I have. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Just a quick, um. Following up with the Mishta grant with Tequila. Is that in force now, and if so, how will we advertise, because that's a great thing.
Yeah, so thank you, Mishta has four rounds of the My Hope Grant. And, um, the applications are currently closed. Because they're catching up with the money that they have given out to be used. So we know that eventually, so we're actually applying for round four, it's due on Friday. So we, and I, I'm knock on wood, I. I don't think there's a lot of competition, like this is a hard grant to manage, so I, I feel confident we'll probably get that again, I hope. And it's a regional grant and we don't know yet our service region, but. What happens is you go out on the Mishta website and you sign up and you say, I need help. And then depending on the zip code you're in, like whatever zip code we're applying, we. We are set to handle, which we certainly would handle Albion, but we might handle broader. And then that would come to us as the, as the point person. Currently, if you were, if you've already applied, Habitat in Battle Creek is your point person because they had applied. For round two money, so as round two money is still being spent. They were the people that got our four-nine-two-two-four at a zip code. So now we'll have the four-nine-two-two-four and maybe something broader, but then we'll work directly with our. Care at Albion and then we'll hopefully fourth round, we would get the same. So they, it's a, it's a lot of money if you just, and it, so the thing is, there's a lot of money, but it, you have to figure out how to. Partner to be able to share that, and that's, we were fortunate to have Tequila. It all started at that event we had at Marshall Opportunity High School when we just asked if people needed this kind of help and sixty people showed up. And, um. I, I didn't think sixty people were going to show up. And I said, oh, like this is more real than I thought. And, uh.
It's real.
It's real. The same.
It's very, so, um, so we hired these sixty people and then the lady from Mishta was like, if you're going to have this big of a turnout and you're putting this much effort, you need to ask for the money. So that's when she was coaching us, here's how you ask for the money. So we, we're building it, um, the application is not easy and it's all online, and so for example. You run into the technical difficulty where to apply, you have to have an email account. It, we take that pretty much for granted, not everybody has an email. So what Tequila ends up doing is helping someone establish an email account, then teaching them how to monitor it and then calling and saying, have you heard anything? And if you haven't come in, I'll help you look it up, so it's like, there's like a lot of hands on and that's. So we get the administrative piece of that, uh, to, to administer the grant, but it's a lot of handholding, so, so. A person could get up to twenty-five thousand dollars to repair their home. And then of the half a million, like fifty thousand of that, that ten percent piece is what. The E D C gets to put in their budget to help fund Tequila's time. So that's, that's kind of a whole package and then we would. We, we don't ever have all the money, we just initiate like a pay up to the state and then they send it right to the contractor, so.
They make the decision.
We make the decision based on, so, so when all the applicants come to us, we make the decision, we get everybody qualified, we help the, we help, uh. Homeowner find the contractor, we put all together, send it back to the state and then we kind of do a pay request. And then that contractor gets paid and then that way the homeowner doesn't have to worry about the payment, like it's not a reimbursable grant. So they, so they get paid right away, the work gets done, so that's the process.
Sounds good.
It's, I hope it works, so, yeah.
Councilwoman Reed.
I just want to say thank you because the people who call me asking questions that I don't have the answers for. And I tell them, call Virgie or either I call Virgie and she takes care of it and. It's just really fantastic because they think I'm great, but I'm not the person you want.
Pretty great too, Mr. Reed, thank you.
Sounds really good.
Yes. Thank you. Um. The My Hope, My Half Grant?
Yeah.
Um, how much in funding did you guys receive?
So we were awarded uh, the, the work to do over a half million of My Hope. We haven't applied for any My Half.
Okay.
But we are, cause they don't have a round open, but we are applying for M I C H. It's another new one. That is due on Friday also. And it's another avenue to help with homeowners. So they, they keep coming out with these different varieties and we just have to keep aligning that with the need. So just figuring out who can use that money.
Right.
So the new one is called the Mish Program.
Okay. Now, um, this, the half a million in funding that you guys received, um. What demographics are you noticing in the applicants who came out for the uh, for the help with the applications?
So uh, so you have to have a certain, you have to have a very low income. So um. Somebody who maybe has not a very high income, again, that missing middle piece, you may not.
Based off AMI?
Mm-hmm. And so it's pretty low. So it's like in the lowest. I don't know the percentage. Tequila could tell you that.
It's not a hundred percent though. Yeah.
It's so you, it's pretty low. Your income has to be pretty low. And, and so like an, another program that Mishda has specifically helps seniors. And then that one, they haven't off, they haven't asked anybody to be like a co, you know, person like we are with, with My Hope. But there's a senior one and that one doesn't have the income limits. It has an age limit. And so. One of the things that we're trying to help people understand is what's, what's your circumstance and which funding model helps you?
Right.
So like if Tequila gets a call, she might say, oh, you're over sixty-five and your income is too high for this one, but maybe this one works.
Okay.
And she had guided you to that. Now, we don't, we can't control who gets that, but we can open the door to that.
Okay. Now, um, when you came into the job role, was there um. Was there anything in place that could facilitate this type of thing beforehand? Or did you have to establish it?
The Action Agency did some of this.
Not your office though?
Not my office. No, it probably not. I mean, I, I don't, I can't say if there was anybody. I think the city was doing some, cause like Ian was working on some USDA with individual homeowners, but um.
But not the EDC?
Not the EDC.
Okay. Um. The. The um, group of homeowners that's currently helping with the My Hope Program.
Yeah.
Cause I've seen the program out and being advertised, but I know there's barriers to um accessing it. And I know um, like you spoke of, the, the people who would like to apply that it will benefit. Um, may not necessarily have the email address.
Right.
But they meet all the requirements.
Right.
But on top of that, all of these people are homeowners, right?
Yes.
So you have to own the home in order to get these grants.
And I think so, like you have to own the home, you have to be living in the home, you have to have home insurance. Um, so there are some things that, and you have to have lived there for like a year. So. So the idea of that particular grant wouldn't be to buy a home and then try to rehab it, you know, on this particular program. That would be a different program.
Right.
So this is for someone who has been in their home at least a year, has a certain um limited income. Has home insurance with, I, I just, I did not know that was a thing. Like I didn't know it was a requirement. And so that's been disappointing when we can't help somebody. Cause they don't have home insurance. So then we talked a little bit about, you know, the, the importance of investing in home insurance. So it's. It's been a learning opportunity for both Tequila, I, Lindsay, like. How, how do we really help with financial literacy and the things that it takes to really maintain a home? So it's not kind of a one-shot thing. It's like, how do we, you know, kind of change habits and say, how do you really maintain that home long-term? Because that's gonna really be how Albion residents really benefit from homeownership is not if it's a total drag on you. But that you have a home that you can afford and you know how to maintain it.
Right, right. All right. Perfect. Thank you. It, it also sounds like um, this program is helping to stabilize these. The housing that we currently have.
Yeah.
So that we don't have that um turnover um like we've had in the past.
Yeah, definitely trying. Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Information.
Thank you.
Public comments. At this time, is there anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to a specific agenda item? You may do so at this time. Um, you may come forward, give us your name and address. And three minutes is yours.
Yes, Council. Um, my name is Esther McGee. I live at eight oh five Huntington Boulevard, Albion, Michigan. Um, I met Mr. Hasman on Saturday, which was very helpful, um, knowing that you had no money to fix our street. So I'm gonna let that go. Cause I was gonna get on my bandwagon about that, but I understand you have no money. Uh, so we'll just continue with the power repairs. The other thing I wanna say is that Virgi, we are uh in the process of signing the contract about your hospital. And so.
So ma'am, it has to be an agenda item.
Oh, it has to be agenda.
Agenda item.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We do have another public comment section at the end.
Oh, okay.
Right now, it's just for agenda items.
Okay.
Mitchell, Ron, uh nine twenty-one North Bergen Street. Um, I have a question, I believe for, it's a, it's an agenda item, but it's for Virgi. Um, are there any programs to help um individuals who are above the poverty line? Um, but still don't have the funds to do repairs because they're, I mean, we're almost in a recession. Um, inflation is very high. And so if you were to um obtain a contractor, it could be thirty to forty thousand dollars to for minor upgrades. So um, there's a lot of talk about the elderly and then those who are below the poverty line, which is very much needed. Um, but. When you think about Albion as a whole, it probably values declining. How can those who are in that area where. They make more than the poverty line. They're not sixty-five, but could use some assistance with their home. Um, where do they fall at? Are there any programs for them?
Is that okay to answer? Well, how that works?
He can address it to you. We can, we can answer.
So there's anybody else that would like to stand?
Terriott, nine nineteen North Ionia. Uh, here about the uh property at three-ten Fitch. Uh, that's behind my business. I have tried to acquire that property for well over six years. Through the land bank to uh only be stonewalled on every time I turn, turn around. Um. Now I find out that it's going to be available and the city is going to try to get that property, or the house. I'm going to ask you to please not do that. Uh, that property could benefit my business and the people that work for me. Uh, which I understand a house will benefit a family, couple, whatever the case may be. I have five people that work at my place and it's since the town is talking about expanding because of Blue Oval and everything. This only seems to make sense to allow me to probably uh, uh possibly acquire that property so that we can continue on and, and make our business even better. Um, there are probably about three or four properties on Michigan Ave. That would be a better location. If you wanna showcase the house that you're trying to build and make it appealing to everyone. Why not put it on a main street right there? So everybody can see it instead of hiding it back behind where nobody's really going to see it. Uh, there are two properties there, three-ten and three-twelve. Um, if they wanna use three-twelve, that's fine. Please allow me to buy three-ten so that I can help. I have elderly and handicapped people that um still is quite a walk. Some people have to stop halfway to my shop with their oxygen. This way, if I can get a small addition, which I tried to get through to the land bank and put a rear entrance there. They'll only have to walk five or ten feet to walk in my business instead of having to walk seven or eighty feet. It would benefit a lot of people that way. Um, again, I know the housing, putting up a house will help a couple. Possibly a family, but we're also talking five other families. And if there's gonna be growth in Albion, why not help right here with the people that are here? My business has been there for seventy-two years. So it's one of the oldest businesses in this town. So to throw it under the bus. Or one house that could be built anywhere else to me seems a little bit ridiculous. But that's up to you guys. And I really hope that you see it my way and uh the people and help us out. Thank you.
Anybody else like to stand and address council in regards to an agenda item?
Am I free to speak about the EDC?
Um.
Nope.
Anybody else? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Councilmember Ray, yes. Dixon.
Yeah.
Damon.
Yes.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes.
买到
All right, city clerk for me go.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Yeah. Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Friends. Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the M M L liability renewal premium?
So moved. Support.
City manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is an annual approval. And we provided M M L with all of the required documents to renew our liability and property pool insurance for the city. Um, it's four, seven, one of twenty three through seven, one and twenty four. Having shared that the city will receive a dividend in the amount of eighteen thousand nine eighty six. So the total for this year is two twenty nine, um, two twelve. So we are recommending approval, and this will be built into the next fiscal year budget.
Any questions for city manager Snyder on this item? City clerk Michael.
Council member, Ray.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Davis. Yes.
Friends.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And there's.
Do I have a motion to approve reservation twenty twenty thirty fifteen? The use of the Mishna mod program for first housing.
So moved. Support.
Director Arnold.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Corbin, City Council. Uh, so you have a resolution in front of you designating uh three ten Fitch as the subject parcel for our Mishna mod program. Staff is recommending approval. Um, I'd be happy to field any questions you have on this, or if you just want to top to bottom on on this one, I agree with that. I I I will say one more thing, uh, the purchase agreement related to this parcel. Those will have to go to the next council meeting just due to how long they have to be uh, published before they can be. How long a resolution to purchase property has to be published before the council can act on it? So you're not purchasing anything tonight. You're designating the uh three ten Fitch Street Lot as the subject parcel of the grant.
Any questions? Yep. You know, John Davis.
Yeah, as you know, Mr. Otman mentioned to um his desire. What kind of arrangements are options will he have?
So it's a difficult question, speaking to the to to his comments and 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 your question kind of broadly there because there's um because I can't make a whole lot of decisions as far as how the 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 land bank sells their property. I can tell you that where we meet with the land bank on this is checking when they send folks our way interested in their properties who've applied for purchasing their properties. They send them to my office to check if what they want to do um would be approved by our zoning code. Putting a parking lot on the three ten Fitch Street Lot is not something that our zoning code currently approves. We're talking about a residential two parcel, um, when it would need to be in that area of mixed use parcel. The parcel on Michigan Avenue that his business is on, as well as the rest of the face parcels on Michigan Avenue are mixed use. Most of the ones you can see a little bit on that map, but I'll say in general, when the rezoning was done back in twenty nineteen, the planning commission went with the surface lots of Michigan Avenue being mixed use with all of the side streets uh, pretty much immediately being residential. You can kind of see that reflected if you're yeah, in front of you or behind you, you're on the map here. The agenda is mixed use and the orange is residential two. And we're talking about a difference between those two districts. Ms. Davis, if you had more specifics on your question from there, wanted to orient me a specific direction, I can say.
Not really. Uh, I I hear what he's saying. I understand what he's saying. So I just wonder, do we have options to help the situation?
You know, I I say so too because when when we were talking about the highway and what was trying to decide whether there was going to be parking still being able to park on the street or have to park somewhere else. That might return sometime and you never know when. So why would we want to put him in that kind of position? And he's been there that long.
Yeah. I I will just say that as as staff, I think it's my job to see both sides of this. But if council has hesitations about uh moving forward with this parcel as as it's been presented to you tonight, I think you're definitely within your right to table this. Um, at least till next meeting, like I said, we're we're having those resolutions up there. But I I think if there is a conversation like that about where we, you know, where we tell Mishna we'd like to build this property. Like I said, we've done a fair amount of work looking into that, but that doesn't mean we're we're out of options.
Very if I can, and I don't want to not find an um solution to assist a business owner. Um, but we applied for this grant back at the end of twenty twenty one. We were awarded early twenty twenty two. It is now well halfway through twenty twenty three where we're trying to identify a clean parcel to build a new home. We have two that have clean phase one. I would be inclined to make the recommendation we move forward with bringing new housing to our community instead of using that to cover it with a parking lot. I think we can work with the business owner to identify a different solution. Um, but I know we've been trying to identify um, a parcel that we can take advantage of and move forward with this grant application. Insurance, Arkansas and stand up.
Um, you know, also, and and I I think the city manager may have more information on this than I do, but it's my understanding that part of the reason that the land bank won't sell property that business owners because the intended use by the business owner doesn't meet the criteria that the land bank has for uh use of that parcel.
That's correct.
So it's not just our local zoning. It's the land bank's policy that they're not going to sell it for a parking lot.
That is correct, and I believe the policy is the proposed use when purchasing um property from the land bank, it has to fall in alignment with the local zoning ordinance or zoning quo code. And since that is not an eligible use, it does not meet the policy of the land bank.
Any other questions? Yes.
Council member Ray.
I still know there's a whole lot of conversation going on around up in the college area about the fact that people not having enough parking space be because the 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 kids are parking. Well, when you park cars, you have no room left in the street, but just a little bit for one car to get through. And this one lady that was saying that they were parking across her driveway. And when she had go to work, she had drive around her house and down the the yard to come out. I think this should be tabled until some more thought is given.
I can say uh just one thing on that. We did take some time looking for these properties, but we did get two clean results at Fitch Street. And I think that naturally, you know, again, saying that no action that we take is going to compel the the land bank one way or another. So if we were to start on three twelve instead of three ten, um, we could probably still get our house built. we could probably still get our house built. That would, like I said, that guarantees nothing about any future business deals between the Calhoun County Land Bank and Merinos, but yeah, I mean, you're certainly within your right to to table or change the designated parcel to three twelve and I'd be happy to work with you between now and next council on either.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Yeah. So I mean, that still goes back to, we had the conversation during a study session to make sure that we had all angles taken care of before going further in a project. So as the Merinos come to us, if he and after this thing, we probably should let them to the land bank as well so they could hear that from the land bank and from us of why they wouldn't sell that property to them. So hasn't it been time that the EDC, the CDCO Virgini, has she ever asked and request to help you guys with any of these types of things so that and she didn't even offer any money to my knowledge. She didn't want you guys to pay her for it. But I know this is another skill of hers of verifying and making sure all these things are taken care of before moving forward and sending, giving it to us so that we because you know, we're a buyer right now. We're trying to.
Yeah, I know.
You know, a residence and definitely want our town to have two brand new homes there that can bring money to us. And we don't want to see a business that's been here twenty-seven, twenty-seven years, you say?
Yeah.
Seventy, oh, God, I got them numbers mixed around, but I got the two and the seven there. Seventy-two years too. And I mean, it's just, here we go again. You don't want to be that person, but I just like to make sure that we've done all our due diligence.
Yeah, and I would say we have. So our, the proposed use falls in line with our zoning, our current zoning code. So it is to build a home in a residential area. The reason that's been the holdup from the land bank moving forward with the sale, the proposed use does not meet the zone current zoning code. So they can't move forward with that sale because it's against the policy that they have in place. I know these conversations have been going on before my time with the city, so this is not new. I know the land bank has met with Mr. Ah regarding this for several years. So it's not. I think we've had the conversations at both the county level as well as the city level. So I think for city administration, we have done our due diligence by doing proper environmental testing, finding a clean property and making sure that falls in line with the current zoning code to move forward with this project.
So I do empathize with Mr. Ah, but like we are talking about, this is potential policy. And the fact that we're kind of coming more than halfway through the lot of time that we have to utilize these funds in this Mishna Mud program. I don't want to put us in jeopardy of delaying and then finding ourselves in a position where we can't get this done with the timeframe. Because what this does, this will then in turn, they sell the homes and that money from those homes, we're able to do more Mishna Mud project. We will build more homes off of these sales. So it's a, it's a domino effect. If we don't do this, we have nothing else to build from. So like I said, I know, you know, this is definitely something that you've been battling for years before Haley or I or so many of us here. But we're just in that position now where we have to make a decision what's best for the community. And we all know that homes is a necessity. We keep talking about how homes are a necessity. And if we put up a roadblock, we may be putting ourselves in jeopardy of more future homes. There is no other property.
No.
Not right now. Any other questions or comments? City Councilor.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes. Wait, just a minute before we start, would you read the question? What are we voting on?
We're voting to approve the resolution.
Councilmember Davis. Yes. French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
No.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. I have motion to approve revolution twenty twenty-three sixteen toward the distribution system materials through Loomis Water Consultants.
So move.
Support.
Mayor.
Yeah. So this is the second part to the ongoing water system inventory verification project that we have going on. The city was awarded over four hundred thousand dollars from Eagle to identify the materials for our water systems into our home residents, homes and businesses. At the last meeting, you awarded the external verification to B and B Environmental Services LLC. And we're looking to bring Loomis Water Consultants back on board to help the water department assist with the internal inspections and verification process. We had an agreement with Jay Loomis not too long ago to handle some other water operations for us. So we're just kind of expanding the scope of that agreement to allow him to assist us with this project. So we are recommending approval. The agreement has been reviewed by the attorney's office and we're looking forward. Mr. Loomis, having retired from the city, has a wealth of knowledge, understand, knows our system, I think, really well. So he will be able to help us move this project forward. And all of this is covered through the grant funding that were received through Eagle.
Do we have any questions for City Manager of this? City Councilor.
Councilmember.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Future agenda. No thing. You got one more. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Uh, discussion of the city manager's contract renewal. So as you may be aware, may not be aware of, City Manager Snyder will be marking her third year anniversary in March, March. Initially, we had a three-year contract with her. We do need to look at creating a subcommittee to renegotiate a new contract with her. That's what council would like to do. We want to get this done sooner than later so that we are part of the budget process that we will also be looking at doing later on this year. So Mayor Protem Jackson and I were on the initial committee as was former Councilman Williamson since he is no longer here. I would like to make a motion that Mr. French take that seat since he has been a part of the contract negotiations before with previous city managers. So we need to kind of look forward to getting this moving so that we could put a new contract in place that suits all of us on council.
I can't make the motion because I'm a subject of the motion, correct?
Oh, may I make the motion? I make the motion that Councilmember French, we added to the committee to negotiate the contract for the city manager.
Be.
And I support that.
Before we vote on that, how many people are on the committee?
Great.
There are.
Do we have any comments, other further comments on that? I didn't hear that. Were there any further comments?
No.
How to go? Try to.
I was just going to say technically, I mean, when you have a subcommittee and then it serves its purpose, it's kind of self dissolved. So I mean, realistically, the motion would be to create a subcommittee. You and Councilwoman Jackson volunteer and then ask to add Councilman French. So realistically, you're just creating the same subcommittee and the three of you
Yeah, in the first.
volunteering to serve.
So move. And I can support. Any other further comments on that? So hopefully we can get this done soon so that we can come back to council with it all.
Labor Day.
Right?
You have a vote.
You have a vote.
Need a vote. Need a vote.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Future agenda items, anything that council would like to see brought forth? And upcoming council. Mayor Protem.
Yes, I'd like to have this special on West Ward project in the EPA branch on the next agenda. Now. May I bring it to you? It's not the.
What's. Not a part of the whole.
Okay.
Yeah. Remember, it's the housing, it's not.
The. Oh. Yeah.
Any other future agenda item? Don't.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. I can just. But I want to just say, uh, comments, that's right.
No. Um.
Really?
He. Yeah, future agenda item. Um. It's about the EDC. How does um our board what discretion do we have over the budget that we supply to the EDC? I'd like to see that as a, as an agenda. So we can actually discuss that.
Any other agenda items?
When do we start budget conversations? Is that September or August?
Probably September. So we've started internally. They're starting have begun working on that. The biggest holdup are at wages, we're in the collective bargaining process. So we're trying to finalize wages with the unions and then we'll really be able to. Okay. But work has been started.
And when should that be?
Our current contracts expire September thirtieth, so we should hopefully be done with meeting at the table here very soon.
Anything else? All right, public comments. So at this time, if there's anybody that would like to come forth and you have a public comment to counsel, you may do so. Just give us your name, your address. Go ahead.
Um, it's what you guys were just talking about. So Ryan Westar was the one who told me that of his own. And he also told me that if I got shit out or someone missed juice, he would sell me the property. I got that done. He didn't sell me the property. He then said, if you have two lost, is the only way to save the property. I only wanted like driveway back there with a couple lot, a couple part of places that were your entries to my building was all I was asking for. Brian Wentz was the one who said, if you put an addition on your property, it would greatly help your ability to get that property. So I hired an architect, drew up this hand draw, a small addition, all sides of garage, the factor. Then submitted that to Kristen. She said, well, you're going to put a dish on back there. Why not? I can profit now. I think your boss told me to do it. She said, I know that. Now. That's the truth. Instead, I didn't do that. That's why I did. As far as zoning goes, we all know there's certain things, spots, only if you can spot, only if property you want this town. We have seen the zoning changes. Cause I believe there was just some property that got rezoned with college, seven, eight, nine parcel. You got to change. So this could be done too. And you could also use three twelve or any of the ones I mentioned, I think, wanting, I'm sure they'll probably test with you. So the zoning requirements, they could be bad. It's not that they were killing. And like I said, it was from the land bank and the county treasurer. Their idea to do things that way, that's probably just follow what they said. So the discussions that I had with the land bank and county treasurer, yes, we've been going around with this for six years. And every time they told me to do something, I did it. And they saw it too. Yeah, most of it, I did it to this report five times over and over and over. They tell me to do this, you got to farm, do this, you got to grow. And you know that fish can have, or it's all got that all changed for issues. Again, they changed it on me at the last minute after that too. And finally, I threw my ass, you're just, I don't want to be the problem. No matter what I do. So and we know that ten spots on that can change that. And at the time that I came back and sit after that, they said, it only makes sense if you're right divided or to do that. So that if there were a business of any way, shape or form there, they would have access for that for part of whether it be a dentist's office or whatever it is, that would only make sense. Thank you.
My name is Al, we've been at the same time together. I own businesses that are beyond borders and in that case, both which are kind of too old. I don't know this. You, the older people are awesome and maybe he's worked with us because what our attention is to bring veterans who are underserved or something and they just need that home so they can get back on their feet. They generate part of a other competition there and just bring the credit used to the obvious. Me, this is a perfect spot. Essentially, it's American dream, small town, all American. And when I lived here twenty years ago, it was one of the most first places that I ever lived before. Not so much now. A lot of things that were here before they, they, I thought of this, start this perfect thing or nine or something. It's the only issue that they're talking about. We are crazy. Every time I think I have something set up for that, I want to have a place for veterans to meditation garden, a place for people who have trauma to come and learn meditation. All these things. I had to have a multi-use purpose, building for a multi-use purpose, man. I can't buy a house and develop that on the other beach because the land bank says, well, you can't actually win these land unless you're going to buy two houses. It's the way the city is set up now, all the things that are downtown are the bottom owned by somebody who purchased, probably the dollars. Everything that is going on in this town is almost done it in the way it is being done or done as a preferred is going backwards. When I was here twenty years ago, you called it the rabbit wood. It sucked the water was was only yellowish, always that is clear now. You know, so there's there had, and we had a meat locker, we had a lot of vinegar here. And I came back and I'm just obvious only for this, it's a lot of things that you all, maybe not well particularly. But having put in place, they very good for people to come here and establish a business and establish things and working to improve. That because if we did it zero to one, you did a block of nothing. And then you have to go to eleven and they have all another one. So it's almost like it's hard in in a setup where a business can't come here, especially as far as this and establish themselves. I'm not trying to establish one, I'm trying to establish two. And I have friends who wants to bring one of them up. We're going to bring human beings, we're going to bring job training, life skills and earn people up. And at this point, when I look around the city of all, yeah, I'm like, okay. Once I do that, what is here for them? There's literally nothing here for me. So I asked you as a city council, how can you help us to to say, yeah, create your business here? We're going to, we're going to build our city back up because it's gone down tremendously in the last twenty years. And thank you very much for having me.
Well. That's going to be here, you know, by. For our competition. Couple of things where pay tax or not free products. Where, what do you do with that money that we pay for the test? That's one of the issues, right? What, what do you do to, you know, we pay taxes. I know you have a lot of people don't pay taxes because you know, the seniors or whatever, but what about people who pay taxes? And so, you know, if we don't pay taxes and we lose that property. And then we got to deal with all the holes and stuff at the street. Then you have anybody come in town and they go, oh, my goodness. What is wrong with this street? I have no idea. I have no idea what's wrong with this street. They said the tax, I don't know where it goes to. I don't know what they're doing. They said they have no money. So I guess our cars, they can't afford to fix our tires when they got repairs. So I have no idea. You have your needs and you can think of anything you can do about some of these streets. Patch them up. If we can just go down one street and just ask people on the street and you go need some money to fix our street, that is our street. What about the other street? So I'm just very disgusted. The other thing is, um. Uh, what about the other street? So I'm just very disgusted. The other thing is, um. I want to say that we are in the process of finding the uh whole hospital to develop it. Uh, put uh seniors in it, a lot of the businesses in it. Uh, Virgi has been just extremely helpful in us getting this property. She hooked us up with a commercial real estate person, uh, went over there to listen to on the grounds, tell us all the things we needed to have, or do, or contact. So I'm just real happy that we do have somebody that we can go to, and they're gonna work with us and help us out with this stuff. Because before, I mean, I've worked with Ian, uh, but you know, he's been good about helpful, but. Where's the rest of the people to help us? When you talk about the belt and the time and, and houses, um. I, I'm just a fool, I mean, I've worked with people here that we call over to uh. Uh, Battle Creek to see about getting their souls, uh, fixing their roofs, they had that program, the neighborhood program. I mean, I don't know what happened to a belt right up, I guess, because I, they haven't got anything, so I probably got furnaces on a few things there. But we need some help, we really need some people, some movers and changers in the style. That's the only thing that's gonna help, you gotta have some movers and changers, can't go back and forth, you can't be, uh, but, you know, we'll do this one day, we'll do this next day. No, get it done. I, I'm, you know, I also have a business here, so I don't know what you can do, but we need somebody, you need someone, or put somebody in charge that can do something. Does anybody else understand any rest council?
Sorry, great team, awesome. It's been. Um, I would like to bring back on that. I was just planning, I asked her that, I was watching on the speaking. We're just inside the valley. I saw there's, who, he worked. We had worked on. Wow, we're hanging, speaking.
Is that?
Yeah. They got more to offer than what we had. And I just promised that. That if you keep thinking, saying, if you keep doing the same thing, same way, you get the same results. Why are you still going that way? Why is the mindset still the same? You can't make change, to change. And that's what we, we think outside of the lines. And if everybody who's worked has achieved, and let people do, clear the channels. Everybody do their job, we'll get some better stuff.
Anybody else like to stand and address council? Alright. City managers report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So a copy of my report was included, just a few things to note. First, I just want to applaud um, Albany Department of Public Safety for the wonderful National Night Out event that they put on last Tuesday, August first. It was a great time for all, I, I don't know if you um had the chance to get out to McIntosh Park, but they were people of all ages, there was music going. We had um a bounce obstacle course, painting the car, people on the. Um playground, the slash pad, it was just a great event. So I just want to applaud Chief Kip and all of his staff, um, ADPS for putting on a great event. Um, we, just so you approve the internal inspection, but I just want to remind everybody that we have a water service material inspection project going. Um, so to help eliminate the lead water service lines here in town, we first have to identify them, so this is what the current grant is helping us do. Um, letters have been mailed out to randomly chosen residents and businesses to participate. If you have received one of those letters, please respond either granting us permission to move forward with inspecting your um. Lines in your home and on the exterior of your home, or if you do not wish to participate, put no and still send the notice back to us. That will allow us to move, to identify new um person or business to take advantage of the program. Um, so if you've gotten one of those letters, please respond, so council, if you can share this info with the constituents in your precinct, that if they've gotten a letter, it tells you what you need to do. Um, to help us move this project forward. As a follow-up to Mayor Pro Tem Jackson's request, the um information regarding the backflow prevented, prevention inspections has been added to the website. So if you know anyone who needs um help with that, please just direct them to the city's website. Um, I also want to add, um. I was actually receiving notice this morning from Neighborhoods Inc., so the city of Albany, we um provided letters of support. They have been awarded uh both Mr. Grants that they applied for. I know uh Ms. Amerman mentioned them in her report, so they've been awarded two hundred and seventy-five thousand through um the Michigan Housing Opportunities Program. Yes, Michigan Housing Opportunities Program, Energy and Efficiency, so the MI Hope for four hundred and ninety-five thousand and two seventy-five for the MISH. Um, program, so this will allow, as Ms. Amerman said, to residents take advantage to make necessary improvements to their home. They just received notification from MISH that they were awarded this grant, so when they receive, when the funds have been released, they'll provide us with more information. In ways that we can provide to our residents to take advantage of, to take advantage of that resource.
How much you say, well, again?
Um, the MISH grant was two hundred and seventy-five thousand and the MI Hope was four hundred and ninety-five thousand. So I will provide you with more information once I receive an update on when those um funds are available. Um, and then just follow up to the roads, I had a meeting last week with Wayman Associates to finalize level of funding to finalize that transportation asset management plan. So they're working to prepare two plans, one will, if we want to move forward and bond out. To do kind of a large um skill project, or if we just work with our friend Road Village that we have in place. So we will be bringing that back at the, one of the September meetings to present those two options, and then I will look from direction for council on which route you would like. For us to take, so we can get that asset management plan finalized. And that is all I have for my report.
Any questions for city manager?
Oh, in my calendar, I had the testing at Crowell today for lead. Did that occur today in terms of students or people being students specifically, able to be tested for lead in their. In their system, their body test.
And where?
Uh, I had it for Crowell today.
That I'm not sure, do you know who was, was it the Healthcare Alliance doing that testing?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can follow. See the Healthcare Alliance or um Gamble.
Okay, she's been working, yeah, Shauna, she was working with Rod Ahn and, and the Healthcare Alliance to do that, I can follow up with them to see.
I just wondered how it went, so.
Any other questions for city manager's neighbor? Councilmember council. Mayor Tim Jackson.
She can go first.
Thank you.
Uh, famous things.
Yep. Um. One of the concerns I had regarding ribbon cuttings and things like that, and I have received information regarding supporting new businesses. And ribbon cutting activities, and I just noticed that um. Uh, the band shell, the renewal of the band shell, there was a ribbon cutting, but no council members were there. Uh, I don't believe we received any kind of, you know, information regarding supporting it, or at least being there. So if you can make sure that, you know, we get notification, and we will come, well, you know, we can put it on our calendars to support. Uh, whatever's uh that are occurring in the.
Who's that, the chamber?
No, that was, that they, the swinging at the shell, they did their own.
They did their own.
They did their own ribbon cutting, so I can see that that be shared with you as well. Typically, the ribbon cutting ceremonies for new businesses is handled by the chamber. If they are a chamber member, I know the DDA, they have kind of stepped up to help assist and get more ribbon cutting ceremonies for downtown businesses. If they're not um a chamber member, so I know they're trying to get more active with supporting new businesses.
Just to promote and give them publicity, so then that current chamber members, DDA will help with the ribbon cutting.
No, I got you, I got you, just trying to make sure we got the right, the right group that we need to talk to.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that the council is informed, so at least some representation can be there. Yeah. Would like to uh also congratulate uh council member Nora Jackson for excellent different. Miracle Thomas. Okay, to make sure, say thank you for the difference makers, it was a very nice program, a lot of the students attended and. Uh, the good job that she is doing with that program, so congratulations on another year of uh job well done.
Yep, another good summer of youth programming and support for the kids. It was a nice turnout, nice recognition for the students and what they've accomplished. Um, and bringing the community together, you had a lot of community buy-in, but also you had a, a lot of support from people who work with you. On that day-to-day basis, uh, be there and celebrate with the kids, that was, that was a pretty cool event.
How many certificates did you hand out?
Um, there was a total, did you say like fifty-something certificates uh for the um program? But I also on that note, thank you, um, I want to definitely make sure we um speak of Everine showers. And then that was um Jaquiel Short, and that was Kena Williams that backed that program up, and we did have a couple individuals through Virgi. Going out and doing that um job request, where we're able to get some of our young people um involved as well. And, and get them um some dollars and cents in their pockets, so that did work out too. Um, but I wanted to thank you uh council members for coming out and supporting you as well, mayor. I don't believe we don't get it, that we are better together, um, and thank the city, thank you, Kip, you couldn't be there, but you did come through with um the waterfall. And um, there was many of you that couldn't be there and did say that, why you couldn't be there. But I just, um, I, I gotta say who it is, I just thank God for that event, because it showed how we can come together and make a difference in our city. So you guys really, with the support, really helped us. Um, so uh, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Davis, she was back there serving, so as um. The city manager, and I thank you guys for that, but on another note as well, um, two of you, which I would say, I would direct this to Hagley and to um Cullen. Maybe you can answer now, but I think we would like to have it in an email. Who does the EDC um CEO report to? I don't think.
Directors.
They're boarded, they have a board of directors, okay? So how does the EDC strategic plan line up together as well? Um, and they might report to the board of directors, but then they have to report to us sometime another, to give us something, and I kind of, I know you're gonna ask me, gonna hit me with a lot of questions, but. I think we need to know more about how the EDC slash CEO is running. Um, because I don't think any of, I don't know if, who's really the boss? Because uh EDC slash CEO.
Well, I can, I can certainly send the council a memo and kind of outline it, but just in a nutshell, I mean, there's, there's a. CEO slash president that is an employee of the EDC. That employee answers to the EDC Board of Directors.
Okay.
So they are the employer of the president slash CEO, those board of directors are appointed by you as a city council. Or I should say, the mayor makes the appointment with the, with the consent of.
Okay, okay. All right, but yeah, can you send that to us?
Sure.
Please.
And to kind of just elaborate on council member Williams' question, so their budget is, is essentially part of the city's budget. It comes, their board first approves it, then it comes to city council for final formal approval, so they are part of the city's budget. Um, council, if you wanted to make changes, you have the authority to do that.
That's what it is.
Um, they're part of our audit, um, they fall under our tax ID number, so they are kind of a subsection of the city, but they were. The CEO, president reports to EDC Board of Directors.
Okay, so they're saying that, uh, just a quick discussion, I get off of that, so we can, we might need to bring it up. So that we determine how much money they get, and if we want, if there's a certain amount, we can decrease that as we, if it needs to be.
It needs to be, I mean, council, you have the final, you have the final approval over the budget, so if you wanted to make changes, you can, can do so.
Okay, alright. Sounds good, thank you guys.
And a council member comment? So I do want to piggyback on uh city manager's um comment about the. EDC National Night Out, um, you know, that it's a national, it's a national event. So all police departments um kind of do this in their communities, and I have a lot of law enforcement friends, and I follow them on social media. I will say that ours was like the best. Um, with the activities and the music and food, you know, some other communities, it's very formal. Our was fun, and so I just want to again, give a shout out to Chief Kip, his school, put that together.
I'm sorry, I was at that drawl, that went up in the air, took it.
Like, how you get that picture?
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, separate.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, uh. Your motion to excuse Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, so.
Some more support.
Support. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Mountain to adjourn.
So long.
Say aye.
Aye.
Leading with turn eight forty-one, yeah, thank you all.
I'm sorry.